Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission's Special Meeting being held Thursday, January 9th. Mari Sella, would you please do roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Woolley?
Present.
Commissioner Lehman?
Present.
Commissioner Pro?
Present.
Vice Chair De Rosa?
Present.
Chairman Frost?
Present.
And our council liaison is present as well.
We appreciate our council liaison, council member Adam being here, and our town manager, and our town attorney. So we're well-staffed this evening. Thank you very much. If everyone would please rise, Commissioner Woolley is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin this evening with a call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. With that said, is there anyone in the audience here that would like to speak to the commission at this point in time? And online, if you'd like to speak, if you'd please raise your hand so we know you'd like to speak? I see none here in attendance nor online wishing to speak. We will close the call to public. Go to Agenda Item Number Five, which is a discussion approval or disapproval of the minutes from the regular meeting conducted on December 5th, 2024. And commission members, if you'll notice, a revised set of minutes have been placed here with a couple of corrections. There was an addition that needed to be made to make it read correctly, and one spelling change. And I believe Commissioner Lehman requested some language be inserted just to clarify a statement that he had made in the last meeting, and all of that has been done.
Yep. On page...on page three, I added your comments about the wall.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lehman?
With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes that were submitted.
Second.
We have a motion for approval by Vice Chair De Rosa, with a second by Commissioner Lehman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. It's unanimous, Mari Sella. New business, Item Number Six: Presentation/Recommendation of Approval/Approval With Conditions or Denial of a Preliminary Platt for Mesquite Trails Phase Two Located North of Hiller Road and East of Felix Road. This is PZ-24-35. Staff presentation.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission, tonight we have a preliminary plat for Mesquite Trails. This is for Phase Two. The applicant is United Engineering Group. This is for a recommendation that will go towards Town Council after this meeting. The site is located at the southeast corner of Felix and Heritage Road. And if you want some further context, if you know where...wow, I just forgot the name. Crestfield Manor is on the other side of Felix. That's Mesquite Trails. If you've passed by, there's been some dirt movement there recently. This is...the zoning for this is planned unit development. It used to be a planned area development when it was first created by the Pinau County back in 1999. When it was annexed by the Town of Florence in 2005, it was annexed and then zoned into a planned unit development to match the closest to what the town had, and it is now currently known as Mesquite Trails. Altogether, this community is 638 acres. Phase One is already platted and recorded. It consists of seven parcels on the northernmost side of this community. It is approximately 652 residential lots. Parcel Seven, though, is kind of separate. It doesn't have any residential lots because it's supposed to make space for the north-south corridor that's supposed to cut around Mesquite Trails. Mesquite Trails Phase Two includes parcels 18 through 22 and consists of 133.6 acres. Approximately 599 single-family lots are platted. This is the second of four total phases within Mesquite Trails, and where the lot sizes range between 5,400 and 6,600 square feet, and the widths vary between the units. Five amenity spaces are located within this phase, and that includes different amenities such as ramadas, benches, barbecuing green spaces, as well as tot lots, and there's even a half-court basketball area. Staff has had the fire look at circulation, and we concluded that phasing plan as the fire did see that there was some parcels that may need to be built before others in order for circulation to continue and for fire to get to those units safely, and they have worked with a developer on that phasing plan. I will now turn this presentation over to the applicant so they can give a more in-depth presentation about the preliminary plat.
Thank you. And if you would please, please give us your name and affiliation for the record.
Yes. Thank you, Mari Sella. My name is Sean Hamel. I am with United Engineering Group. My address is 3205 West Ray Road, Chandler, Arizona. Chairman Frost, Vice Chair Del Rosa, and commissioners, thank you. I have a brief presentation to show you, and then I am open for questions. This map here gives you a location of where we're at. As Mari Sella mentioned, it is just east of Crestfield Manor, north of Anthem, and the future Merrill Ranch. This map just takes into account you have what looks like not a lot of development going on, but when, you know, in reality, there's a lot of planning out there. So this kind of puts it in perspective. In front of you is the block plat, master plat, that was recorded in 2005 that laid out the whole section of land into the individual 24 parcels. As Mari Sella mentioned, Parcels 1 through 7 have been recorded and final-platted. Parcel Seven being dedicated by our client to the north-south freeway just to help, you know, navigate that with the town back then to, you know, help position that. We are here today for Phase Two, which is the inside of the Loop, which is surrounded by Mesquite Trails Boulevard. That roadway has already been dedicated to the town along with Felix Road half-width. As mentioned, I'm sure you've all have driven by, yes, there are some grading going on, activity in the Phase One. Maritage Homes purchased those, and they are out there actively grading and getting ready to move forward. I actually just drove by, and there's a lot more big iron out there now. They're ready to rock. This just illustrates more of the remaining parcels within Mesquite Trails, Phase Two, Three, Four. Again, we're here for Phase Two, the inside of the Loop, consisting of 599 lots, lot sizes ranging from 45s, 50s, and 55s totaling, again, 599 lots. Just a better depiction, this is the third page of the tentative plat, just better showing the lot layout. Amenities within Phase Two, there are five total amenity areas, two tot lots, five ramada areas, all connected for pedestrian connectivity, whether via internal tracks, sidewalks, within grassy areas meandering through, or street attached sidewalks. A little more detail, showing the tot lots, ramadas, and seating areas. Again, these are preliminary. More details will be provided in construction drawings, but this is the general intent. The wall plan associated with the preliminary plans, we're proposing a view fence along the wash corridor to provide, you know, a sense of openness. Theme walls within pedestrian areas and along major parkways, and then standard builder walls will be the remainder. Theme walls are consistent with Phase One, with iron baskets filled with native rock, decorative caps. This is just...so this is Parcel 10. It's not related to this particular phase. I'm going to scroll back up real quick. But Parcel 10 is located up here, which would be in Phase Four. That was intentionally planned for a regional park. This rendering in front of you is from back then. It shows the area at the bottom of the base is large enough for a soccer field. It shows a couple basketball courts, or four half-cords, a tennis court, several seating areas, ramadas, and a larger tot lot. Now, since this was done in 2006, times have changed. When we come forward with this particular phase, we will work with the landscape architect at the time and, you know, provide more modern amenities, whether that be pickleball, or a dog park, or whatever that may be, just, you know, informing the commission that there is a larger regional amenity area in the works. And with that, I thank you, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Yes, please. Commissioner Woolley?
I just have a couple...actually, just one, to be honest. Have you had a chance to see and read the staff report?
I have.
Okay. Specifically, the two areas that I want to make sure of is there's a paragraph called circulation, and then the findings itself. The staff findings on the last page. Are you...
I don't have it in front of me. I can grab it, or...sorry. Let me...thank you. Okay, so circulation, yes, I read through this. Is there...are we talking about, like, fire access, or...
Right. No, I just want to make sure you've seen it and read it.
I have, yes.
And the findings as well?
Yes, I read through them today, this afternoon.
Okay. And you concur with both of those areas specifically? One talks about how you cannot build any houses until the...where did she write? Railway improvements will need to take place for the development to move forward and to reduce the traffic impact.
Correct. We understand, yes.
All right. Thank you.
I have some to...
Go ahead. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hamel, I just have a basic question to start with. There will be an HOA for this development, right?
Correct.
Okay. So they'll be in charge of the landscape maintenance and...
Correct.
Parks and things of that sort, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And will there be any set aside for the landscape maintenance person to have an area where they can store their gear and park their cars when they come to work? Because I don't know how big a staff you would actually have for this. This is a pretty good-sized area.
It is. It's a square section. That sort of detail has not been determined. I would imagine it would be an outside company that would maintain the site, not a HOA-controlled, specific landscape company?
So they would not have, like, gators where they could get down into areas like the wash to work and things of that sort, because they'd be driving their own trucks with their trailers to haul the stuff away?
I would imagine the contracted landscape company would have their own yard.
Okay. That's something the HOA would have to decide at some point. The only road that I saw on the plans that matches up with roads to the west side of Felix was Twin Spur Lane, matches up with Wild Horse Estates. So that's the only four-corner intersection. Mesquite Trails Boulevard, that horseshoes around there, I'll call it that way. I like to use descriptive terms. Those are three-way stops essentially that would be down Felix. I'm trying to anticipate, you know, 20 years down the road, how the neighborhood's going to be and what traffic flow will be like, things of that sort. We're having issues with Felix Road now, as it is. So are you proposing any turn lanes, things of that sort, on Felix?
So yes, it'll be...just to maybe not back it up, but...so, United Engineering Group took over this project from...it was a bank sale from CMX who designed it. We took it over. So the roadways are set. They were set back in 2005 when they recorded the master plat. So if we had an option, we would have maybe designed things a little differently, but this is what we have. To answer your question, yes, there are phased improvements that are associated with the traffic report, which include turn lanes, traffic signals, stop signs, right turns, left turns, center lanes, full width improvements of Felix Road all the way down through full build-out. And they are phased appropriately with the amount of homes that are constructed.
Okay. So we'll see those further on down the road here a little bit, as we say?
Correct.
Okay. In looking at this section, to the east of there is Arizona State land, as you show on this picture that we've got up now. Are you going to develop heritage or Hiller Road to allow access to that Arizona State land? Are you going to give right-of-ways so that you can get to that land? Are you going to essentially isolate it?
We are not providing access on the both alignments, the north or the south heritage or alignment. Again, this was pre-designed and agreed with...by the town and neighboring, you know.
I don't...this might be a question for our town attorney, but can you actually isolate an area of land, a section, if you don't provide a right-of-way to get to it?
Well, they...Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner, I mean, I'm not aware that they have control over the state land to the east.
We do not.
So our only purview that we're given the right to regulate by statute and by our ordinance is the area, the preliminary plat area that's colored up there, that's part of their subdivision. So as the engineering representative is saying, I mean, our purview is, yes, out to our, the town-controlled right-of-way, and within the circulation of their parcel, but I don't think we can get into requiring them access to undeveloped land on state land that they don't control or own. It's not part of their subdivision.
Well, what I'm worried about is whether we'll be sued later on for takings.
I'm not worried about that at all.
You're not worried about that at all? Okay. Well, I know that we've got the ghost highway that's going to go on that state land, probably, though we don't know. They haven't come up with a 15-foot right-of-way, but we'll eventually get there, and we may see that in my lifetime, I'm hoping. Okay. But I always...you know, it's interesting that Crestfield Manor has a beautiful road along Heritage all the way to the back to allow access to that property behind them to the west. So you might want to consider that in some future plans, particularly when you go down to Phase Three, and how you're going to get to that east side or give access to that. So just bring it up, and I'm thinking ahead. I'm trying to think 20 years down the road...
Sure.
Where we're going to be as far as a town, so...
If I may?
Yeah.
I think the reasoning behind that, back then at least, was that you have the CAP, the canal. So going east of our property just to the state land portion, there's...the opportunities to fly over the canal is...
I noticed that bluish-gray area to the east of you where Phase Two is written on this picture.
Yeah, that is state land.
And then I see the CAP canal there, but whose land is that green that's east of that?
That's BLM. That's federal land.
BLM also. So in essence, we're not providing any access to either one of those properties, right, at this point in time? Yep, okay. I just want to bring it up and make sure that the town is aware of that. And I've had some issues about that when I bought some land and added on to mine, that before I could actually acquire it, a town asked how I was going to allow that land to be accessed. I said, "Well, it's going to come...I'm going to be on my own property," but they said, "If you ever sell it, you'll have to give a right-of-way across your property to get to it." It's just like when somebody builds a house behind another house, they have to give a right-of-way, driveway, up through their property to that back house. So it's the same kind of thing here, and I want to make sure that we're not in violation of any taking clause of the U.S. Constitution. All right. A minor thing I noticed on the overall picture here that says that you're going to have city abbas and natural gas supply this. Is there an existing natural gas line down in Felix?
There is not existing gas line. It's just within their service area. They do have facilities in the general region, so we just label that as if the future developer wanted to bring a line down, they could pay for it.
Okay. So I'm just wondering if we're going to be disrupting Felix Road by trying to put in a natural gas line. That's why I'm asking.
No.
Okay. Let's see, next. What's the life of these wire baskets that you're using for your...on your wall?
I don't have an answer for that. I apologize. I'm not the landscape architect.
Okay. We'll get into that later, but I mean, I've seen a lot of those used around here, but I kind of wonder what the rust factor is on those things, particularly if you don't paint them.
So I believe there's a detail on there, they're pre-rust to have that effect, and I would imagine sealed to contain that, to keep that rust and not allow it to continue. But again, the maintenance, I don't know the life.
Okay.
But that would be an HOA problem to assess.
Yeah. I don't want to leave them a problem in the future, that's all. We're having that problem right now with our baskets of garbage at Sun City, so we're having to go see ACI to see if they can fix them up for us. So, oh, let's see. Do I have anything else? Nope, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Let's go down the row here.
Nothing at this point, no.
I have several questions. A couple of questions I have for staff, actually. Does this development have any agreements attached to it? Any development agreements attached to this?
Mesquite Trails does have a development agreement.
And can you give us a little bit of information as to what that development agreement says?
It's pulled up here. Yeah, go ahead. Did you click out of it?
It rebooted.
Okay.
I didn't touch it. You told me not to touch it.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, I believe...I mean, I didn't read in detail. I saw that it was in your...the agreement is still in place, I believe, through 2025. It's kind of a typical pre-annexation development agreement that the town used back in 2005. It has a schedule that allows for impact fees, and then refers over to the special zoning that it's been given. So the development agreement's not at issue here, but it is still in place.
And there have been no changes since this project is now 20 years old?
I couldn't tell you what changes on...I don't know that this is...this is a preliminary plat, so they're coming in with a preliminary map for this area of the subdivision. After this, there may be additional technical revisions that they need to work on, that they would work on with staff for their final plat, which will have to come back and be approved, of course. But, I mean, I don't have familiarity with the development phasing or plans or infrastructure at all. That's not my purview. But in general, a preliminary plat does have to comply with the development agreement, if there's anything in that agreement. I didn't see anything that calls out any special circumstances for a preliminary plat in that document at this time.
Understanding this is a very preliminary stage, obviously, it's an opportunity for both staff and the developer to identify any changes or issues that we want to make before they start moving dirt, because once they start moving dirt, we're just kind of locked in. So just an opportunity to take a look at some of those. Again, for staff, has this gone before TAC?
Yes.
Would you tell us a little bit about that?
This did before TAC. Some of the...this is where the phasing for fire came up, was during that TAC meeting. And I believe we had...I believe we had that meeting back in October. And working through some of that fire phasing was part of that.
Okay.
Some other things that came up were we did discuss amenities and some things that would be here, such as traffic and circulation. We...I think that was kind of as far as it went in terms of what I can remember in that discussion. It wasn't...there weren't too many things.
So Mari, I have two questions. When it came to circulation and traffic, especially on Felix Road, did anybody take into consideration the project that will go across on the, I think it's the west side of Crestfield Manor, which will have commercial as well as residential? Does anybody look at the impacts that that other development will have? These developments will be across from each other?
So as I communicated with the commission earlier, the staff did receive an updated TIA for this project. We are in receipt of that. That information's being currently reviewed by Community Development as well as Public Works. So the methodology, the things that are included in that report is currently under review, and we will better understand what, in terms of the surrounding developments they considered in those...in terms of developing the information and their recommendations for improvements on Felix. That report does include suggestions of improvements off-site. One that we're paying particular attention to is some of the work that's proposed in that TIA for improvements to the intersection at Arizona Farms and Felix. So, but that report was submitted and received yesterday, distributed yesterday, and is currently under review. So the methodology question in terms of what did it do and what did it consider in making its recommendations, that's still currently being discussed.
Just want to be proactive rather than reactive.
Understood.
Appreciate that. This project has been in the pipeline since 2005, well before my time. Can you tell me how many homes it build out this project will be?
Total build-out is...I'm sorry. There it is. 2,552.
2,552. Terrific. And Phase One, I see what...obviously what Phase Two is. Can you tell me what parcels were Phase One?
Phase One are Parcels 1 through 7.
1 through 7?
Yes.
Great. Again, I know this is preliminary, but again, with an opportunity to be proactive than reactive, not a whole lot of amenities. Two tot lots for 599 homes doesn't cut it. So just food for thought.
Yep. No, I understand. And I think when we can put together the Parcel 10 amenity package for the regional community, we can...
And also, this community has no linkage to town, so it would be my hope that there be amenities offered to these residents, especially since it's an HOA, that it would be almost self-contained in some ways. Certainly not everything. We certainly want everybody to come downtown and enjoy Old Town, but these people will have no access, and they will be an island unto themselves. So hopefully, we'll look at what kind of amenities we can offer. And again, tot lots and barbecues, don't cut it. Let's see. I know I had a bunch I think that's it for now for this preliminary plat, but we'll discuss this more later. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. I have several here that I will chat with you about. The magma wash that comes down along the north edge of the project and cuts through there. Is there any thought to...I see you're leaving a nice wide swath there. I'm hoping we don't just turn our back on this natural habitat. Is there any thought to putting some sort of a trail through there? I know in the Merrill Ranch development... sort of a trail through there? I know in the Merrill Ranch development, there is a trail that comes along, and so that people can view that, you know, the natural habitat through there. And it would be nice, as part of the town's trail system, to have this segment of the trail done, so that when that next piece gets done, we can just keep adding to it to make it, you know, nice, and it would be nice to be able to get on a bike or something and maybe go all the way down to Safeway, or, you know, things like that. Is there any thought along that line?
So as this is outside the limits of Phase 2, and not specifically associated with this, there are conversations with the town about the wash and ultimate maintenance of it and ability to use it and things like that. So that, I think that'll be discussed in future phases when we get to that particular point.
I know that there's certain segments of this wash, particularly to the west, that Magma Flood Control District has keen interest in. I assume this as well, because eventually this wash leads up to their facilities
Correct.
North of Arizona Farms Road.
Correct.
Any discussions with them about the future maintenance, care, upkeep, et cetera, of this wash system?
There is, and that's part of the ongoing discussions with the town and the district.
Okay, we'll fight for that trail, and we, I think that would be a great thing. And just a curiosity question on my part, what is the Q100, the 100-year flow in that wash? Any thought? That's just a curiosity.
Yeah, no, I'm not prepared to answer that right at this time.
No problem.
We have it, I just don't have it with me.
I noticed that as best as I can determine, you're trying to, based on your 100-year, which I'm assuming to be your 100-year flood elevations, attempting to keep the residential lots that are but that wash, giving them freeboard. And I hope that that is the intent, so that someday when FEMA comes in and actually maps this flood plane, we don't have any surprise individuals all along there that say, hey, my lot's now in a flood hazard area. So I hope you're giving adequate freeboard, like more than a foot.
All lots will meet minimum requirements for flood impact, yes.
Well, but, right now, there are no requirements because it's Zone X, and you point that out, and so I just want to make sure that someday when FEMA does map it, that that's been taken into consideration, so none of these residents are going to get that nasty ground from FEMA saying, hey, guess what, you're in the flood plain, you got to pay flood insurance, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct, correct. We do, but we have studied the wash. We do have a base flood elevation for the wash, and all lots will be designed in accordance to meet the safety standards associated with that. We're not that far along in the design process, this is a preliminary plat, so we haven't got to grading yet, but yes, when we get to that point.
Yeah, it looks like you're attempting to do that, but it's hard to read in the size of information that we have here, so I just hope we do that. And that would be a good statement to put in your drainage report, by the way, to say that we're doing this to be proactive. I think that would be a good thing to preserve for the future, that that's something that you're trying to do.
Okay.
When I look at areas shown on Plan Page 20, Plan Page 21, there's an area in there. Let's see. Where, and I'll, I'll ask our staff if we looked at this, that it appears there's several lots in there.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Like in the 30s on Page 20, and on, that it looks like our officers are going to have a hard time patrolling, because you can't see into that area behind those lots.
Okay, sorry, I'm looking at Page 20.
So the area on the lower east side of 20, and on the, kind of the middle part of 21. PP20, PP21. You're just a.
Near, near what lots are you referring to? Lot, lot numbers? Or are you talking about Track 21F?
30, 31, 32, 33, 34 would be some of the northern lots, all the way up to Lot 35, then the corresponding lots to the south. When I look at that, I think our officers are going to just have a hard time patrolling that area. Require them to get out of their vehicles and go for a walk, and I know that's something that I would really like to avoid, putting them in that situation. If you look at PP03, that's a good indication of what I'm talking about as well. The overall, kind of the index for it. So there's that narrow part of that basin in PP20 and PP21, that there is just no way to view into it.
Gotcha. I mean, I, I can't speak to the officer's ability to patrol. I know for drainage purposes, it works, and connectivity to other tracks, it helps.
Just, it's a safety concern that I always have, that we're just leaving an area with, that's, makes it where officers can't patrol it adequately unless they need to leave their vehicle, which compromises their ability to do other things, so. I don't know, manage your walls, do you want to talk to this, or does anybody taking a look at this?
Jimmer Frost, Vice Chair and Commissioners. This is something that I have not had an opportunity to go and look at, but I believe Commander Rika-Mini has. If the Chair will go and allow me to take this back and review, I can go and work with staff to make sure that that issue is addressed.
Yeah, it'd be nice in some way to make our safety work there.
Might want to see what the comments from the TAC were on this.
Yes, ma'am.
And just, just a positive here, something I've become kind of keenly aware of of late is straight streets invite speed on by cars. I appreciate all the curvilinear nature of your streets here, because that automatically traffic calms. Thumbs up.
Yeah, thank you. It definitely hurts inefficiency, but, you know, it does help with layout and look and safety.
Okay, on PP04, your cross-sections of Felix Road A and B, I noticed that on this major arterial, that our sidewalks are attached. Marty Cell and AJ, aren't sidewalks on arterials, aren't they supposed to be curvilinear and unattached?
I'm sorry, repeat the question.
I just noticed on PP04, the cross-sections for Felix Road, Section A and Section B, it shows the sidewalk attached, and I thought with our major arterials, that the sidewalks are supposed to be detached and meandering a little bit to provide a little bit of variety to the side of those roads. You're struggling with the same thing I have, just being able to see them.
I miss the days of 24 by 36, and we're making noise. I, I can't read that.
If you want to just follow up with that.
So we'll follow up with that, absolutely. I can't see.
I thought our detail required that.
There are, if I may, there are special circumstances with this portion of Felix and our property with drainage facilities, so we are limited on space with, while providing the maximum amount of pavement, our drainage facility, and pedestrian movement. And again, this was all done and already dedicated, pre-constructed, so we're, we've been working with the town as best, you know, to accommodate everybody. And if there's an opportunity to, yes, we will, absolutely.
So with that, if you just put the stationing in there that says where it's going to be attached and where it's going to be curvilinear, that'd probably solve all that.
Yeah.
Super, thank you. PP06, just a comment. And I, another big kudo to you is that you have a lot of nice trails in here to make sure that people, it's very walkable between the green space. You've got a nice piece of green space here in this in the upper right-hand corner, but then you cut right through the middle of it with that sidewalk. Be better if you took that sidewalk and moved it to the north and west, so that you open up that area to make it a little square, just so it's playable by people if you're going to put turf there.
Yeah, those are easy opportunities to adjust.
And then I'll catch it while we're here. You'll notice that in a lot of these areas, and I understand this preliminary plat, but the slopes are all very even. It always looks a lot better if you vary those slopes just a little bit, so that it doesn't look like a bowl, particularly you have one basin out against Felix Road, that right now, according to what this looks like, it's an absolute bowl, there is no variation to the slopes. So if you provide a little bit of interest and vary the slopes, that would be awesome.
We can look into that.
On PP09, up in the upper left-hand corner, note that you're putting in three 4x10 box culverts to get under Felix with the drainage. Are you incorporating the use of the box culverts that are there? Are you adding to them, or are you replacing them? I only ask the question because up on Mesquite Trails to the east of here, you have five 4x10 boxes. And I don't know how you can go from five down to three unless you're going to be incorporating the use of those, it just doesn't say here.
So what I can say to that is we are still working with New Magma and the town, and there was a recent study, and I, I'm not sure if it's completed yet. We, the boxes and culvert, to my understanding, is we're not adding, we're just extending.
Okay, that answers the question, that you're extending it.
Yeah.
Okay. Then on PP11, and this would be a typical comment, it looks like, and again, I'm interpreting from a very small scale here, when, when your pipes come into the basin, if you're using dry wells, you pipe to the dry wells. In my experience, if you do that with a very fine, silty nature of what we have around here, you essentially kill those dry wells very quickly. A better option that I've seen used is to come into the basin, offset the dry wells, you know, 30 feet or so, and have the lip of the dry well up a couple of inches, so the silt drops in the basin and doesn't go immediately into the dry well. So that's something I'll pass on to you for sad experience that I've had, you don't, just don't pipe.
Sure, no, that's, yeah, no, that's a great comment, and those are readily, easily movable. Yeah.
Okay. Just following Mr. Lehman's comment, that's just a future nightmare to maintain and replace when that happens, and those things get to be pretty expensive. I had the same concern that my Vice Chair colleague here with some of these sites, and I understand that you're dealing with 2005 technology, but in particular PP22, and you have a pretty nice site going there, and you have a basketball court, maybe a couple of pickleball courts, and then also that they would be lighted, so that in the summertime, you can use them in the evening times. And I think I danced through the bulk of my comments. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your comments.
Commissioners, with that, is there any other comments, concerns, questions of our applicant?
At this point.
Nothing at this point? Okay, any final comments from the applicant or staff? Anything else come up in the course of this that you'd like to alert us to?
No, we don't have anything else.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Members, I guess we're ready to entertain a motion on this one. So I will make a motion. We'll recommend approval of the preliminary plat from Mesquite Trails 2, which is PZ24-2035, incorporating the staff's requirements and the recommendations that we have made this evening.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion that I have made for approval, a recommendation for approval, and a second by Commissioner Lehman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, like we're moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Director's report.
I believe we're going to have a busy 2025. This is the start of a number of projects that are going to be coming to this commission. It does look like we're going to be hearing two additional preliminary plats in early February. We'll be hearing, it's expected that we'll be hearing from Polte East of Felix Project, south of this project, and that we'll be reviewing the Monarch Project at the southeast corner of Arizona Farms and Felix. They will be ready to go here soon. So we're expecting, we're expecting a busy couple of months ahead. We've also received some applications for projects further north in Florence, looking at battery storage facilities, and some industrial uses north of Arizona Farms toward Judd, all the way up to Bella Vista. So we will likely be seeing some minor amendments and possibly major amendments to the general plan being brought to the town of Florence for consideration here. So a busy time, and an exciting time as we go forward.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I do, I have a couple of questions. AJ, can you tell us how many preliminary plats are in the pipeline?
This Mesquite Trails, as we discussed tonight.
In total, how many, how many?
I was going to walk through them, so I could count.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
So we, I mentioned the Polte East of Felix Project, the Monarch Project at Arizona Farms and Felix. Eldorado Holdings, which would be the project east of Polte's East of Felix Project, is immediately after, so I'm expecting that we're going to see some activity on that project here in the first quarter of 2025. So that brings us up to four. We believe that moving ahead, in conversations with Langley, that they have an intention to move forward with final plat on the first unit out at Florence 287. So they'll be moving into a final plat on that project. That brings us to five. We have had preliminary conversations with folks, developers representing Walker Butte, which would be west of the work that's taking place by D.R. Horton and Meritich on the west side of Hunt Highway, but we haven't heard from them lately. We would have to check back in on them and see where they are in terms of bringing a plat forward to the town.
So Walker Butte doesn't have a preliminary already?
They have a preliminary, this would be final.
They're final.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's my understanding that once a final plat is approved, the builder, developer has a year to start construction?
There's a year to record the final plat, is the rule that the town has adopted for final plat approval.
Say that again, AJ?
Signed and recorded.
Signed and recorded. So after the final plat, how long do they have to sign and record it? I mean, can they take years?
They have the year to get it signed and recorded, then it's a legal document.
So a year to get it signed and documented?
Attention, I got it, yeah.
And documented, and then a year before they have to start it? So it's a two-year process?
Once the final plat's recorded and signed, there's no timeframe to start it.
Okay, so the basin question is, once a final plat is approved,
Yes.
How long before a developer has to take action? Or can they sit on it?
They can sit on it for 10 years.
Seriously? A final plat?
Once, yes, once approved by the town council, gets signed and recorded, that is a legal binding document that sits then there in perpetuity and is there in place and can be acted on at any time.
And can sit in perpetuity?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mattis, can that be changed?
Once, once the final plat is approved and recorded, it's a vested right. So unless there's a separate development agreement with the developer, requiring certain incentives, or for a timing of construction or phasing of construction, you know, there might be certain incentives that go away if they don't build, but it's a vested right. They have a right to build it that way, once it's awarded.
Is this something council could look at as far as development agreements with some of these?
Development agreements already have an application process for the town, so a developer would come to the town and file an application and pay a fee and say, we'd like a development agreement, and then the town can respond saying. And then the town can respond saying, we'll discuss it with you and see if it's appropriate for that situation. Normally, there are some incentives that are offered for construction to speed up essentially as used.
So we have no way of having, of moving a developer forward from holding up land that could be developed?
Not unless there's a contractual agreement that's entered.
Is there a way to get a contractual agreement?
Like I said, a development agreement would be something like that, but.
Would that be something that would have to go before council to discuss and see if they want to move on changing the development agreements?
Correct. Not changing an existing one, no.
No, I don't mean changing existing, I mean, I mean going forward.
Yeah, I mean typically the developer comes to the town or the planning staff and says, you know, we have this great project and we'd like some incentives. And the town says, well, we could provide maybe X, Y, and Z, but we also want you to build Phase One within two years of the final plat, something like that. So there is a process for that. It just, we have not had a recent development agreement for projects, but there are multiple existing development agreements, such as the case you heard tonight.
Thank you. AJ, I just have one other question. The Anthem Reclamation Plant, can you tell me where that is?
The what?
Anthem Reclamation Plant.
It's the wastewater plant that they talked about flows going to from this development that we looked at tonight. It's on the, it's on the west side of Hunt Highway, kitty-cornered and down the way from Safeway. Sits back off to the west of Hunt Highway.
By the DR Horton homes?
It's in the, the DR homes kind of surround it right now. Basically across the street from the fire station.
There's a blank, there's a block wall there. Okay, I know where it is now. Thank you. Didn't mean to shock you.
No, that's okay. I'm more familiar with it as the Upcore facility, so, got you. Yes, that's correct. West side of Hunt Highway, south of the DR Horton development.
And that is, that has become an Upcore facility now, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Call to Commission. Commission Members, anything?
Third Friday's coming up and we want to welcome Mr. Buckner to our team as a second alternate to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Agenda items for the next meeting, is this appropriate time to ask?
Please.
I'd like to know status on Hunt Highway improvement as relative to what we've talked about tonight. You know, with, with the, with the development going on here, there's, Hunt Highway is already under capacity. We've talked about this a number of times. And I'm just puzzled why we're doing some other things, but we can't improve Hunt Highway. Now, I know, you know, it's the Indian Reservation, the road or the railroad has been an issue, I guess. But what is it going to take to get past that? There was a fatality on Hunt Highway a few weeks ago. I mean, it's not a safe situation. And we're talking about adding another 2,000 homes here in the next, what, how many years? I don't know. We're already way under capacity. I've asked for this several times and we're not getting anywhere, from, at least what I, from my understanding. So can we have some kind of an update? And what is it going to take to get moving on that? That's my question.
And so the, and the section I think you're talking about specifically is from Judd down to the north end of the Anthem Community right now, right? That, that an improved section, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, staff, that would be a good piece of information for all of us to have, just to, in our minds. So if you could follow up, it's probably a call to the county to ask what, where they're at with that too, that would be great.
Yes, we can, we can follow up on that and that, the whole matter previously of that postponed meeting with the PUD updates and the transportation plan. That is, those items are both set for discussion at Town Council's work session on Monday. So staff is expecting to get some direction from the Town Council on those matters and how to proceed with presentations and the content of those presentations.
Great, thank you. I had one thing, and this is when I was looking through the agenda item for this evening, I was looking at the general notes, which were hard to look at because of size. But the one thing that I noticed there that I see on a lot of other plats in other communities is language, and I'll just read it. I know we can't take any action tonight, but I made copies of it for all of the Commission Members up here and for you. If you just take a look at this, maybe at a future time, we can talk about it. But this is what my proposal is, and this is basically to get back to kind of Commissioner Lehman's thoughts about ongoing maintenance and things like that. All retention basins must drain any storm event up to and including the 100-year, two-hour storm within 36 hours. Owner slash owners of any basin failing to meet this requirement must take corrective action to bring the basin into compliance. That's basically just to ensure that in the future, the town is not saddled with maintenance issues and that the homeowners association slash owners of that are kind of giving a heads up that, hey, these things need to be maintained. So I'll pass that out and then we'll talk about it at a future date when we can addendize.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of things and maybe these are more happy. On the 25th of this month, I've seen two different names for Brew Fest or Hoppy Fest is going to be taking place at Padilla Park. And I was, I was going through my news feeds yesterday morning and all of a sudden I saw ABC 15 out of Felix had a reporter down there where we just approved the battery storage plant across from the Peaker Plant. And they didn't really say anything other than they meant to, it was in Santan Valley. And I went, okay, yeah, that's true, but maybe they should have said Florence, we would have got some credit. But it was CNBLU's. They showed it and they showed the batteries and the storage units. So that was kind of a, I kind of perked my head up when I saw that, that news flash come across my computer, actually. One other thing is coming up on February 1st, there's going to be the 150th anniversary of Penal County. And there will be activities, I'm sure, at the courthouse and all. I haven't seen all the plans for that. Of course, next year, this may help you with Maricela, is the Heritage Home Tour. We will be at 160 years in Florence. So we ought to be doing some special things. I know my wife over at the Community Services is going to be talking about some of those things. So we should be celebrating. So we've got a county celebration this year and a town celebration next year. So we can look forward to those things. And that's all I have.
The Historic Home Tour is on February 8th from 10 to 4.
February 8th, put that on your calendars, that's always a great event.
I will caution about the Penal County Courthouse, though. They are doing some renovations at this time, so I'm not sure how much open they will be.
Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for adjournment by Commissioner Woolley, seconded by Commissioner Lehman. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.